Good afternoon. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We will be hearing Council Bill CC 22-0234, Ordinance, Police Accountability. This is our second hearing. We'll be having a third one next week, same place, same time. What's the date?
On June 8th.
And last time... Last time, we heard from each of the agencies, so I will not make the agencies repeat themselves unless they have something else to share. What I will ask, just for the record, is if we can go down the line of anybody sitting over here, just to say who you are and who you represent, so we know who is here. And then, we will jump into public testimony, and then followed by that, we will talk about some of the things we heard from the last hearing, and some possible amendments. We're not going to be voting on any amendments today, but we will at least be having a discussion on them, and then amendments will follow at the next hearing. I do also want to say, there was supposed to be an executive nominations hearing before. That nominee has withdrew his nomination, so we will not be having that hearing. I will start to my left, if the members of BPD want to introduce themselves, and say your position, and we'll just go down the line. Or you can introduce the team, it's fine.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Michelle Wurzberger. I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. Today, I am joined by our Deputy Commissioner, Brian Nadal, who is in charge of the Public Integrity Bureau, and Shannon Conway, who is my colleague in the Government Affairs Team. She is the Legislative Coordinator.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Natasha May here on behalf of the Mayor's Office, and I'm joined with my Deputy Director, Nina Themelis.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Major Jason Gurus, Baltimore City Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon, I'm Maryle Chutina. I'm the Supervisor for the Civilian Review Board, representing the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, from the Sheriff's Office, did you guys end up submitting the report we were waiting on from last hearing? Do we have that, Nina?
Last Friday.
You did? Okay. Was that forwarded to the committee? I just didn't see it. You will. Okay, great. And last, but certainly not least, the Law Department, if you want to introduce yourself, and say who you are.
Good afternoon. Yes, my name's Ebony Thompson, Deputy City Solicitor, and I think we're just a working group. We already testified, is that correct? Okay.
Please have a seat right up front.
All right, thanks.
All right, we will jump into public testimony. If you have not signed up already, please sign up in the back of the room. First one up, Ray Kelly.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ray Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of the Citizens Policing Project. We're a member of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs, as well as the statewide coalition, Maryland Coalition for Justice and Police Accountability. It's been over 11 years since my work aimed its focus on police accountability and civilian oversight. And to say the least, it's been a long, rough ride, two steps forward, and 10 steps back, time and time again. And here we are again today, after decades of deficient accountability in an unchecked police department, we find ourselves in this generational moment, with the opportunity to create a Police Accountability Board, representative of all Baltimore's diverse communities, accountable to the many different cultures and demographics that make us the great city we are. We cannot afford to squander it. We appreciate the initiative of Councilman Conway with the initial PAB legislation, and have offered amendments we feel will help ensure Baltimore is making the most of this opportunity, and continues to be a progressive leader in the realm of police reform. As referred to in our letter to the council, the integrity of this board will weigh heavily on its independence from all of the politics that continue to be a barrier to real progress in these efforts. And to prove we've learned from the debacle between the CRB and the Solicitor's Office by allowing the PAB to obtain independent counsel to avoid any perceived conflicts of interest, we must ensure that the members appointed to serve on the PAB are of true representation of as many of Baltimore's communities as possible, and the accountability ladder is accessible as possible as well. While our city endeavors into redistricting and local control, it would be logical to broaden the representation of the board to our city council districts. Having our local representatives nominate residents from their district not only eliminates the possibility of a board handpicked to support the agenda of one individual, but also invites another level of accountability. As for many, the city council person is their most attainable access to express their concerns. The construct of the PAB should be inclusive of every demographic BPD is sworn to serve, including both the immigrant community and those leading productive lives after returning from incarceration. The ability to serve on the PAB should be in consideration of an individual's professional and lived experience, and a demonstrated ability to be objective. Individuals should not be disqualified for past indiscretions or lack of documentation. Although state law requires an individual to be 21 years of age to serve and vote on this board, our city has to be intentional about the voice of the youth is prominently representative on the PAB as well. And to help fortify sustained participation, we strongly suggest some semblance of compensation. Finally, I'll remind you that this board is being created to hold the state's police departments accountable to the people they serve. Transparency and access are two of the most important components needed to build the community's trust in the PAB, and its supposed authority. The public must have access to its proceeding, as well as its recommendations. This is our chance to consider the lessons of the past, identify our shortcomings, and incorporate all ingredients needed to set the precedent for oversight in Maryland. Let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sergio.
Good afternoon, council members. Again, my name is Sergio Espania. I'm Director of Engagement and Mobilization for the ACLU of Maryland, and organizational partner of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. Again, grateful for the opportunity to speak with you all today, and to again emphasize the need for our crucial and very sensible amendments, that we're glad to hear that they're starting to be discussion on within members of this committee, as we proposed over the last week. In particular, though, I want to emphasize two of those points, and why they're so crucial. We think that they're absolutely fundamental to making sure that this bill lives up to the goals of HP 670, and to again remind us of the particular exemplary position that our city is in when it comes to meaningful civilian oversight of our police department, as we continue to push to implement local control of our department, which would allow us additional fundamental changes, such as independent investigatory powers. And also just the broader concern about the fact that we're still very much within the consent decree, and very much during dealing with significant criminal elements, both outside of BPD and within, that will not be addressed unless there's active focus on rebuilding public trust, and ensuring that taxpayer-funded institutions are focused on the job. So the two points, first off is independent counsel. Since its inception, our civilian review board has still been seriously limited by depending on legal counsel support from the city Solicitor's Office. This is the same legal counsel that is used to defend our police department against allegations of misconduct, thus creating a fundamental, obvious conflict of interest, and one that has made it extremely difficult for the civilian review board to ensure that their investigations are adequate, and their findings responsibly available to the public. We saw this play out a few years ago, back in the summer of 2018, when the city Solicitor's Office tried to force the CRB to sign a confidentiality agreement, out of concern that their findings would be damaging to BPD's credibility if made public. Not out of concern for public safety, not out of a rebuttal of their findings, but out of concern for reputation, regardless of long-term outcomes for our residents in our neighborhoods. Which is why we need to make sure that these issues are addressed, and are given the proper independent abilities for those issues to be addressed through the Police Accountability Board. Again, the country's task force report, and the Department of Justice Consent Decree make it clear that this type of inherently limited legal support has made it needlessly difficult for the CRB to hold police accountable, to inform our residents, and to focus on their responsibilities. And here, with this bill, we have an opportunity to demonstrate our city's commitment to the consent decree, and more importantly, to improving public safety through establishing public trust and accountability with our tax-funded institutions. Our coalition urges you to consider implementing independent legal counsel within the Police Accountability Board itself. And the second point is, again emphasizing the need for independence, is around ensuring that our city's PAB is independent in its membership, which means that we must ensure that no retired law enforcement or direct family members can participate, let alone be in board leadership. Under the limitations of HP 670, police will continue to have control of the process around investigations, through trial boards, internal affairs investigations, and their presenting of investigatory findings to the Administrative Charging Committee. The PAB is the only entity in this process that can, and as a result, needs to be, as independent as possible, to be as effective as possible through this process, in our efforts for strengthening accountability, public trust, and public safety. We must ensure that the Police Accountability Board is made up of residents focused on the goals of independent accountability, and that represent those most needlessly impacted by our department's current unaddressed issues. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Rachel. It says, I can't see the last name, it says Cutler.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. My name is Rachel Cutler. I live in Arcadia, and I am testifying on behalf of Jews United for Justice, to urge several key amendments to Bill 22-0234. As you all know, JFJ organizes more than 1,600 Baltimoreans to support social, racial, and economic justice issues. Our work is motivated by Jewish values, which inform us that we must pursue justice in all that we do. During the 2022 legislative session, we worked with our state and local partners to reconcile our existing civilian review board and its powers with the new mandates created by the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021. The bill failed to pass, but the intensive process, paired with knowledge from our existing CRB, solidified for us what strong, independent, community oversight of the police must look like. Our suggested amendments uphold three principles that informed the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021: independence, transparency, and representation. First principle, independence. Police Accountability Boards must be independent of the police department they oversee, and from undue interference from city hall. This is why we insist on an all-civilian membership for the PRB. Police have no place on a board meant to operate as the instrument for holding police accountable to ordinary citizens for misconduct. In fact, it is antithetical to the principle of community oversight to allow former law enforcement officers and family members of law enforcement officers to serve on the PAB. On the same principle, our PAB must also have independent legal counsel. I know my colleagues spoke on that earlier. To avoid serious legal conflicts of interest, lawyers who represent the police department and the city cannot also serve on the PAB. Finally, independence dictates that the PAB chair must be chosen by the board, not the mayor. And we do hope that city council, as well, can appoint members to the PAB, rather than appointees by solely the mayor. Second principle, I'm going to speak on transparency. The PAB must be transparent. If we have learned anything from the sorry history of police department corruption and the subsequent nationwide reform movement, it is that records of police misconduct cases and the deliberative processes underlying their investigation must be available to the public. The PAB is the people's instrument. The public must have access to its results, and I know in the letter sent by CJSJ, we suggested a couple of ways in which those reports can be made public, online, quarterly, monthly, et cetera. Third principle, representation. The city's PAB should be representative of Baltimore's residents, especially those who are most directly impacted by police misconduct and overpolicing. The current bill excludes constituencies that are most likely to suffer at the hands of the police, and who can speak from firsthand experiences about unjust policing. Membership of the PAB must therefore include young people, those who have served time for prior convictions, and the immigrant community. Police officers are responsible for serving all residents in the community, regardless of their immigration status or previous encounters with the criminal justice system. Restrictions on membership hinder, rather than promote, public safety. JFJ and CJSJ urge the city council in the strongest possible terms to incorporate into 22-0234 these and other amendments recommended in CJSJ's public letter dated May 18th. The city and its residents deserve a fully independent PAB. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachel. Next up, we have Marie Rose.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mary Rose Mayfila, and I am a CASA member. CASA is the largest member-led immigrant advocacy and direct services organization in the state of Maryland, and in the mid-Atlantic region. I would like to raise a major concern in my testimony today, in regard of membership criteria for the PAB. It is extremely important that immigrant community members have the ability to apply for a sit at a PAB, the clause of citizenship, or the LPR status. They must be amended for the bill. I'm here today to ask for your support in making sure that the immigrant community has a voice in the PAB. Immigrants are a large population here in Baltimore City, and police officers are responsible for serving all community member in Baltimore City, regardless of their immigration status. The PAB should have a good representation of the Baltimore City population in order for it to be effective. Civilians like me, my friends, and family members would be more inclined to file a report if we knew that there was a person that would understand our concern. Hopefully, you will consider making the amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marie. Next up, we have Christine Flowers. We'll come back to Christine. All right, next up, we have Rhiana Eckel. Thank you, Rhiana. And next up, I think this is Danielle, I can't read her last name, starts with a B.
Hello, my name is Danielle Brown. I'm the prime of Donal Rochester, who was killed February 19, 2022. So today, I would like to speak about that passing this bill is very important, so it can't happen to another child or another person, and help families like myself get justice, you know, for ass police brutality. Because my son did not deserve what happened, you know, what happened to him at all. And unfortunately, it did happen to him by the hands of police. So this bill being passed is very important to myself and of the victims. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And the last person I have up here is Dwight, starts with a W, I can't see the full name.
Weinstein.
Weinstein, I'm sorry.
Chris.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all we have for testimony. Any of... Yeah, would you like to sign up to testify as well?
Yes.
Okay, you're welcome. Just please state your name clearly.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, and neighbors, friends of the city of Baltimore. Just a few items.
Can you state your name, please?
Leo Burrows Jr.
Leo Burrows Jr.
I live in Bolton Hill Community. I've lived here, I'm a native Baltimorean, so I've lived here for a long, long time. Let me just say that I hope that subpoena powers are guaranteed with regard to the conduct of the business of the Police Accountability Board. I don't, quite frankly, I don't see how it can operate without subpoena powers. And I don't know what you've said, because I came in a little late, but I don't know what you've said regarding staffing. What is the budget? How much are we budgeting? A million dollars per year seems to me minimally something you have to have, because you have to have a staff, a director, you've got to have secretary, you've got to have maybe two investigators. But I just don't see it possible that voluntarily, all of those offending parties are going to come forward and voluntarily provide the information. So that's where the subpoena powers come in. I think each city council person should appoint one person to serve on this accountability board. Each council person, you've got 14 districts, am I correct? And the mayor should have one appointee. So I'm talking about in the public sphere, I'm talking about 15 people. And then we know you have other non-voting persons or organizations, the FOP, and Baltimore Police Commissioner, NAACP, et cetera. So I'm concerned that this not become a charade, because I understand that the consent decree has benchmarks, and in order to meet those benchmarks, you have to have a delineation of successes with regard to policing in Baltimore. And if we don't do more with respect to the number of people who are arrested for homicides, if it's just the white, the rich, the powerful, who the priority is given to, to solve homicides, then we do ourselves a great disservice. So that's in essence what I want to say. Are the goals and objectives of the Police Accountability Board and the civilian review board the same? Or are they synonymous, or are we just talking about semantics? Do we just want to satisfy Judge James K. Brodar? We all know who he is. He's the presiding judge that oversees the consent decree. And I know there's a desire to make it look good, look good, you know, we want to get from under the consent decree. But what I'm saying to you, if there isn't a strong, very strong input and involvement from the average citizen, who only has to, in my opinion, has to finish high school, if you're a high school graduate or a GED, that's enough to serve on that board. But we've got to get the citizens who provide the leadership in front of this direction, in front of this initiative, lest we perpetrate a fraud upon the public by having a accountability board that is, in fact, not accountable. And that's my great concern, that no subpoenas equal no results, as far as I'm concerned. No budget, no staffing, no well-organized approach to remedying the misconduct and brutality that systemically has been a part of this city's policing would be a gross injustice and a failure to all of the citizens. And we cannot allow that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. I'll put out one more call for Ms. Christine Flowers. All right, that concludes our public testimony. For the rest of the hearing, the plan today will be to go through the proposed and discussed amendments since our last hearing. I sent out, or I'd rather had my staff send out, a list of these amendments as discussed to each of the council members for review, and what we'll do is just briefly talk through those. If folks have questions, concerns about those amendments, please take an opportunity to stop me. By and large, I don't expect much pushback from any of these amendments, they're all pretty straightforward. There are a couple that they conflict with each other, and we'll need to sort that out. But what I'll do is I'll start first with the technical amendments, and I'll ask the Law Department primarily to help me out here. You guys have a list of the amendments as well? We're looking at the same page?
Yes, we're looking, if you want me to go through those, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be really helpful.
Good afternoon, again. We're going to start on the technical amendments, Section 11,第一节11-1, definitions. It can be seen on Bill Page 2. Line 27, it's saying, "Strike the housing authority of Baltimore City Police, which no longer exists." The next one would be on Page 3, lines 15 through 17. "Section 111-1K should be amended to strike line 16 after 'officer,' and strike line 17. Insert 'has the meaning stated in the Maryland Code, Public Safety Article, Section 3-101H.'" The next one is going to be on Page 5, 11-5. Line 28. Or supplementary appropriation legislation. The next one is on Page 6. Line 20. This is just a plain typo. Complaint should have a T at the end of it for complaint. The next one is on Page 10. Line 26, in lines 28 through 30. 28 through 30, striking those lines for lack of clarity. In line 26, strike "determine if," and insert "make a determination that." I think there's one last one. On Page 11. That's line 1, and that is, "Strike supervisory governmental authority," and insert "chief." And that, we made that amendment necessary to be consistent with the language of the state authorizing legislation, Chapter 59. Those are the technical amendments.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee? We're going to start on this side. Councilman Burnett?
Yeah, this is just, actually for you as a sponsor. On the copy you gave us, there was also an additional amendment on Page 6, that I didn't hear from the Law Department, inserting strike lines 12 through 13. hear from the Law Department, inserting strike lines 12 through 13 and hold quarterly meetings with heads of law enforcement agencies of Baltimore City.
This is number 29 on the list? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, it looks like I inadvertently skipped that one. Thank you so much. And, yes, that is 29, Page 6, 12 through 13. Yes, we strike those lines 12 through 13 and insert, "Hold quarterly meetings with the heads of law enforcement agencies within Baltimore City." Correct. Did I miss any others, sir?
No, you're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for catching that. Any other questions? All right, so you know, questions, we'll move on to the other potential amendments as discussed. I think we are good to go on the technical amendments. Thank you so much, Law Department. There are a couple of things that came up in the course of this, and so I'll try to touch on each one, one by one, for consideration. And I encourage folks to ask questions as we discuss these. These are conversations that I've had with, or this is, these are things pulled from testimony, things pulled from written testimony, things pulled from conversations with folks before and after the meeting. So these are all things up for consideration at the moment. If there's something that's missing, please do feel free to speak up, and I'll add this to our list of considerations. And the hope is that for, because some of these conflict with each other, we'll have to make decisions, but the hope is to have made those decisions by our next meeting on the 8th. So the first one is under composition and qualifications, so on Bill Pages 3 and 4. And this would add a codified ability for the council to directly weigh in on and nominate board members. It's come from a number of testimony, both written and spoken. Any questions about that?
Mr. Chair, it looks like you're, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please go ahead, Councilwoman Ramos.
It looks, these are just summaries and not language quite yet. So it says here, either through council president or through individual council members. So what is the inclination? It sounded to me, from the various testimony, that it really should be like a nomination process from us.
Excellent question. So that's still up for consideration. I think, right now, we have 13 members on the board. If you look at the way the bill's drafted, there are nine from each of the districts. And at the moment, every, everyone is selected from the mayor, or by the mayor. And so we propose changing that. The question is how to do so without having a board so large that it's unwieldy? If we have 14 members, or 15 members, including the council president, choosing a single member for the board, and then having the mayor do the same, is that too unwieldy of a board? Does it provide adequate representation in otherwise? That's the first question. And then there are four issue area experts. Right now, they are named as particular organizations in the bill. And we propose, in the next one, excuse me, in Amendment Number 3, to replace those specific names of organizations with types of organizations, so that we could be a little more broad in the folks that we're looking to get insight from. So I think there are a couple of questions at play here. Do we give individual opportunities for council members to choose folks for the board? Or do we entrust the mayor and the council president to do so? Or do we find some mixture of both? Or, or, and, I guess, a question of whether or not we have those issue area experts, folks that have been doing this work in different capacities for organizations already, and would provide some issue area expertise. And I think if you, my thought, and I'll just speak broadly on this, if you try to do both, we could end up with 20-something members. And I'm not sure that that's going to be a healthy size for board trying to do this kind of work. So I, those are my considerations at the moment, and have not yet made a decision on how to go in that regard.
Do we know, if I may, Mr. Chair, do we know if Police Accountability Boards across the U.S. have standards in terms of number of members?
I don't, there is nothing in, and also, there's nothing in the state law requiring a certain amount.
The state law in terms of a mandated number.
That's right.
So basically, the consideration is here is really how big do we want the board? And also, obviously, making sure that we have consideration for the various issue area needs. And then, you know, having, listening to the testimony here, whether or not it's every member gets a nominee, we can take a page of another council person's playbook and do like a random selection by group. You know, it sounds like that's something that we still need to work out.
That's 100% right.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Oh, please.
You can also sit at your desk.
Oh, I mean.
Yeah, you can use the microphone right there, it should be working.
I didn't know.
You're getting your steps in, it's okay.
Just for, so that we can consider and talk about this, the Law Department has been reviewing just this whole general concept, because it has come up in numerous sections of testimony. Whether the council can, in essence, by ordinance, give itself the power to appoint, because in the Charter, it's actually Article 4, Section 6, it gives sole power to appoint city officers to the mayor, except this provide otherwise in the Charter. Now, the state law could also provide for the authority for City Council to regulate appointments, but however, in this case, the state legislation provides that the governing body should establish the membership of the PAB. Now, we will admit there is some subject to interpretation there in terms of the membership, because it doesn't lay it out very clearly. So this could mean the nature of the PAB membership, i.e. the number of members that we're talking about, what their background should be, what the terms are, but it could also include the power to appoint as well. So, but generally, it's vested in the power of the mayor, and it's usually strictly interpreted. So we did want to put that on the record as we weigh this. So it's, and it goes the same way with removals as well. I mean, because I know that's another point that keeps coming up, in terms of whether the board can remove without either the mayor or City Council input, so.
Can you clarify something for me? I know for the, for the Charter Review Committee, each council member had an opportunity to appoint someone or recommend someone. How does that sort of fit this mold, and why is, why is that different?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is for us to consider, because usually, that's how it's interpreted. So we do have to look at that. It's generally strictly interpreted, but however, it's, there can be some guidance there, because the state legislation does not specifically spell it out. And that's what we're going by, and we're measuring, we're looking at what the Charter says, but then also the state legislation, and where there is some room, where it's not clear there in how we can interpret that. So that is just something that the Law Department is considering, and we are weighing that, but I just wanted to put that on the record, that that is a consideration as we're making this determination.
And, Mr. Chair, I think that was a charter amendment. Like, we had to pass a charter amendment.
That was a charter amendment, right.
In order to get a Charter Review Commission, and that changed, the charter amendment itself changed the way that it was appointed.
So what you're suggesting, then, is that we would need to do a charter amendment in order to give ourselves the ability to appoint folks to this board?
Yeah, because the Charter then would say that if it was a charter amendment, that we could, yeah, exactly.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Absolutely. I just wanted to, like I said, I want it to be conversational and let you know all of the pieces that were.
Very helpful, thank you.
Very helpful, thank you.
Another consideration around this would be to potentially have the mayor choose the folks from the nine districts.
Nine police districts.
Nine, nine police districts, and to have the council president choose the remaining four, on behalf of the council, of course. So there are a number of ways to sort of try to get toward that. But these are things that we're considering at the moment, and have not yet made a sound decision on yet. And of course, we'll make sure to consult with the Law Department before we pull together what that amendment will be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all great questions.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to second, if I had an opportunity.
Please go ahead.
I did want to second Councilwoman Ramos's point about the, because I was, as you were saying it, I was pulling up the Charter Review Commission. We do have an ordinance, I mean, a resolution as well, calling for that. And so I would be supportive of council nominations. I think if we're trying to have a board representative of the entire city of Baltimore doing so, it would be, this would be the way to do it. The other thing I would flag is that, you know, doing it by police districts, when we're also redistricting police districts, may not necessarily, the timing may not necessarily align with the pressure that we're under to get this board set up, while that process is pretty much unclear as to when it will be completed. So we'd just flag that, too.
Yeah, excellent point, that's one, that's actually point number two. Given that we are looking at police districts, that number may change and may not. The fact that we don't know the answer to that could have a bearing on this, this board. And so the suggestion was to just strike it from the, from the bill. It would still be tied to police districts theoretically, but of course, it depends on how we decide to go about Amendment Number 1. Any other questions on that? Any other thoughts, ideas, before we move on? All right, here and now, I'll move on. I mentioned this for Amendment Number 3, or potential Amendment Number 3, to replace the specific names of the organizations listed, those four seats that would then be chosen by the mayor, to replace those names, if we did keep those in there with general, with general organizations, organizational skill types of sorts. Amendment Number 4 would be to add a non-voting youth representative to the board. One of the wrinkles here, it would be, I think, awesome to have a youth member, but unfortunately, the state requires that folks that serve on the board be 21 and up. So we couldn't add someone officially to the board with voting ability. However, I think it would be possible for us, and I would defer to the Law Department to just make sure of this, to add potentially a youth representative who does not have the ability to vote.
Yeah, we generally do not see a problem with that.
Okay. Excellent. The Fifth Amendment would be to strike the citizenship requirement. Any questions about that?
No.
The Sixth Amendment, this, there are a couple of discussions here for which we'll have to make a decision on. We've heard from a number of folks that they would rather not have any police representation at all, former or current, otherwise, on the board. I've also heard from others that they would rather have the same restrictions for police officers that we have for others. Put this into context, we are proposing in Amendment Number 7, removing any language that prevents folks who have been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor to not serve on the board, believing that those folks would have a definitely worthwhile and useful perspective. The seventh one, of course, is within the lines of, and we've got some rough language here, "We would adjust the language to allow that those convicted of a felony or misdemeanor could serve unless they have been convicted of a felony or a crime of moral turpitude, for which the penalty and sentence has not been fully satisfied." So if someone is still going through their sentence, they would theoretically not be able to serve on the board yet. Someone who has done their time would be more than capable of serving on the board. Going back to the conversation around police officers, of course, there's one proposal to not allow former police officers to be a part of the board. There is another proposal to put the same restrictions on those officers, on police officers as we do on others, saying that they could serve on the board. And then there is a sort of middle ground of sorts being proposed, for which we would bar current officers and allow former officers, as long as they have not had a major complaint sustained against them. Councilwoman?
Mr. Chair, just a suggestion to go back to the discussion of a way to put, I guess, a youth representative on the board. I know that the city has a youth council with representatives from each district, and if some way, the chair or head of that council, if that could, if they could work in that particular person as a requirement for them to sit on the board, if they're, if that could make things move faster or easier for a youth, because we do have representatives on that count, that youth council of every district. And then that could be part of the conversation, when they have their own, you know, personal meetings with the head of that youth council.
Thank you, Councilwoman, that's an excellent suggestion. Just made note of it. All right, anything else on that, or? All right, we'll go back to the conversation around police officers. Any questions, thoughts on that at the moment? Councilwoman Burnett?
Yeah, I mean, I would be in favor of no, no members, of current or former. The current Civilian Review Board doesn't have, at least my understanding, does not have a current or former police officer on it. I think we should remain consistent in that way.
Mr. Chair, the law does not have an issue with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to Amendment Number 8. This is with regard to officers, and this would vest the power to elect the chair with the board. And adjoining that, Number 9, would extend the chair's term to two years. Any questions about those two? All right, we'll move on.
Chair, I have a question about that. Amendment 8, vest the power to elect the chair within the board, is that a charter issue as well?
Same, same issue, but if you're going to go for amendments, you know.
I know. That's what we did with the OIG bill that I just introduced as well, because I had to change that, because normally, it would be appointed by the mayor.
By the mayor, yes, that's what it says, yeah. So it's the same issue.
Yep, thank you.
All right, duly noted. Okay.
That would also apply to 9 and 10, because the Charter also, just in my research for the OIG Board Bill, terms are always four years concurrent with the term in the Charter.
This is for the officer.
I understand, but the, right, the officers of the, oh, the officers, not just the members.
Right.
Oh, okay, got it.
This is just, just the officer.
Yeah, yeah, well.
So the chair of the board.
Might still be a charter issue.
Is, is it a charter issue if it's the chair of the board?
I do not, well, if you're taking the appointment, outside of the appointment, I don't see what the term.
Okay, all right.
So maybe that's a misstatement. If we could just double-check, just to be doubly sure.
Yeah, I'll double-check it, yeah. And then, but Number 10 is the terms of the board member shall be staggered, that, I think, is a charter issue. Because in the Charter, it says that when you appoint boards, they have to be concurrent with the term of the mayor. And so we, in the OIG Board Bill we just did, we had to change that as well, because we just had to change that.
We're going to look at both of those, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, we'll move on to, we're up to Number 11. And this is on term removal compensation to replace violation of law with language from Potential Amendment 7. And just to refer, Potential Amendment 7 would adjust the ability for folks with a felony or misdemeanor to serve on the board. So to replace the violation of law with language from Potential Amendment 7, a felony or a crime of moral turpitude, which the penalty and sentence has not been fully satisfied, so the same language. Amendment Number 12 would allow for regular compensation for the PAB members if provided in the ordinance of estimates or other supplementary appropriations, as already discussed, I think, in the technical amendments. So that's repeated. Amendment Number 13 would mandate that the reports submitted to the mayor and city council be made public. Amendment Number 14 would add a third provision, providing that if a complaint is filed with the law enforcement agency- is filed with the law enforcement agency, the complaint must be forwarded to the board. Amendment number 15 would add language to allow OECD.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, can we go back to amendment number 13, please?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Mandate the reports submitted to the mayor and city council are made public. Do we need to be more specific in terms of how they would be made public, like, online, submitted to the council at a hearing? Like, do we need, do we want to be more specific?
Yes, we can.
We're just wondering.
Yeah, I think it'd be very appropriate to say that it'd be posted on the website.
Or we could say, posted on the website and any other public venue, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, with that, did we want to have, like, annual reporting to the council? Like, in a hearing?
Yep. All right, so, I put a note in to be more specific about where we post, to set at least a minimum bar, and to provide an annual report from the board. Amendment number, I think we did 14. Yes, 14 is that complaints filed with law enforcement agencies would be forwarded to the board. 15 would allow, it would add language, language to allow OECD to start accepting complaints on behalf of the PAB on July 1st, as an interim intake process until the PAB is able to establish its own. On to number 16, it says to strike shall and insert must on, this is page 14, excuse me, page seven, line 14.
I think that's a drafting thing. I think we normally say shall for everything. Why would we change to must?
I'm not sure exactly if that matters all that much. Nonetheless, we will consider it and discuss it with DLR when we actually draft it. I don't know if it's a matter of form, or if it's a necessity in order to ensure that that must happen going forward. Nonetheless, we'll, we'll discuss it. Amendment number 17, this has to do with subpoena power, and subpoena power is listed in the bill already on page, I found it earlier, page 11, line nine. Amendment number 18, to add the requirement for a website or deliberate public engagement and advertising by the board. I think this would probably align with your point, Counselwoman Ramos, on amendment number 13, to be more specific about where to post.
Yeah.
And an annual report. So, I think we can, you know, tie 13 and 18 together. Amendment number 19 would strike duplicative language from, from the state bill around the administrative charging committee. Amendment number 20, and I forgot to mention, we have a lot of amendments. Amendment number 20 would insert the term of the board members shall be staggered in accordance with section three. We'll have to confirm whether or not this requires a charter amendment. Amendment number 21 would replace violation of law with language from the potential amendment number seven, a felony crime, this is about moral turpitude again. Amendment number 22 would allow for regular compensation of the administrative charging committee members if provided in the ordinance of estimates. I think this is already in the technical amendments. Amendment number 23 would add a fourth provision, providing that the administrative charging committee, providing the administrative charging committee the authority to authorize independent investigation of a police misconduct complaint by the OECD staff. Any questions thus far? Just want to make sure everyone's following along. Okay?
Mr. Chair, just going back up to the public reporting, just to put in something that they need to come before us every year. You want to add that, or at least consider it?
I've got that in number 13.
You do? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure.
All right, we are to number 24, I believe, and let me see, 23, fourth provision, ACC authority to authorize independent investigation to police misconduct complaint by OECD staff. Yes. Number 24, so to add the option for the board or committee to retain independent legal counsel to advise, but not to resent, not to represent either entity in court or other legal proceedings due to charter limitations. So, as I understand here, I'm not sure that we would put this in the bill technically. This would be an MOU between the board and, and the city.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
And just to explain this for advocates, I know this is a, an issue that's come up, and folks are very adamant, and I agree on this. To have the ability to have independent legal counsel is, I think, really important. We are bound by the charter to have the, the city solicitor and the city solicitor's office represent us in court. So, there would be a difference between getting independent legal counsel and being represented in court. There's really no way around that, unfortunately. But we, I believe the approach here would to, would be to provide an MOU with the board, such that they have the ability to have legal counsel at any moment.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. It would be in, in, in MOU. We would have to do that.
Excellent, thank you. And then, number 25 would remove the language that this ordinance takes effect on the 30th day after the date it is enacted, and replace that this ordinance takes effect on the date that it is enacted. So, it would come into effect immediately realizing we have a strong deadline of the 1st of July.
Mr. Chairman, amendments that necessitate amendments to the title purpose, if you have a special enactment date.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. There's a presumption that ordinances take effect only a day after enactment. If you're going to, whether it's sooner, immediate adopts, or lengthy adopts, then you have to amend the purpose clause, the language is providing for a special effective date.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to also amend the purpose clause, is what you're suggesting. Okay, I will note that. Thank you. All right, those are all the amendments. Any questions from the committee? We have, it seems, a little bit of deliberation to do on the composition qualifications piece, how we want to set that up. But I think by and large, as I mentioned earlier, I think we're, we're almost all on the same page.
Mr. Chair, there was, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
There was something that came up at the last meeting about the timing in terms of setting up the processes at OECD to continue to receive complaints while we were waiting to set that up. Do we need to be clear about that in the legislation, in terms of the timing, and what types of things can be done until the board is fully set up? And, see what I'm saying? Like, we have that piece of it. And then, because it's, it may end up being that we have some other pieces that need to be implemented later, if we end up going the charter amendment route to deal with the board thing. So, do we need a section about sort of, you know, after enactment, there will be this, that, the other happening, and then, you know, you see what I'm saying? Like, we, there's a timing issue here that we may have to be prescriptive about in the legislation. And that's just a question that we should probably consider.
I just want to make sure I understand you. You're saying that we want OECD, of course, to take over until we're able to fully stand up the board, appoint folks and otherwise?
So, we had this come up, I think OECD actually suggested it, that, if I remember, that there needs to be something, because standing up the board and doing all the appointments and everything else is gonna take a minute, but that the civilian review board would still be going on, but we still needed to have some sort of authorization for the complaints to come in to what would end up being the PAB eventually, right? So, that we're not ceasing operations. They have to get, am I articulating that correctly? Yes, okay. So, we may need to, and it may be if OECD can help us with the language, that would be helpful. Can you, can you come up and explain?
Sure, I'll, I'll just note, I think what you're talking about is amendment number 15, which would add language, show out OECD to start accepting complaints. What I thought you were also suggesting, that we, we would also need to write into this bill a specific date for that to end?
Yes.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, to be sort of clear about how that would work. And maybe not a specific date, but that when something happens.
There's a point.
Then something happens, right?
Yes.
And then also, if we decide to go a different route on the board composition, how that would, do you know what I mean, how that would work? I'm, I'm gonna ask OECD to clarify for me. Is her microphone on?
No.
No. No, we still can't hear you.
You can come up.
Thank you. Yeah, so currently in the bill, it says the PAB has to set up the process for intake. We do have an intake process for the civilian review board already, so we'd like to continue that in the meantime. We do online intake over the phone and in person. And because we're required under the PAB to forward the complaints over to law enforcement within three days, that would be on OECD staff either way, with the PAB established or not. So, we'd just like to continue our CRB intake process and just use that for the PAB until a process can be set up and approved.
Okay, so that's in here already. That's what you forgot.
Yes.
Okay.
So, will we, will we need to be able to designate, though, which one is CRB, which one is PAB, just for compliance? Just, would you be able to parse those out?
Yeah, so the civilian review board requires the complaint to be on a signed form that's been approved by the CRB. So, in order to do this, and many complaints don't actually fit under CRB jurisdiction. So, what would happen is if someone called in to make a complaint, we would take that complaint, forward it to law enforcement. If it was a civilian review board eligible complaint, we would let the complainant know that they have that right as well to file with us. But we would mainly be taking them as PAB, and we would set up different online intakes through our website and also in person.
Clear about that in the meantime, in the law, in the, right, got it.
Yes.
That's what I was moving towards, and I just needed clarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I see we have two people who came in. Just want to see if you want to testify. Denise Ward? Did you want to testify?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, just wanted to see if you wanted to testify.
Well, this is my, this is my first appearance here, so I'm not sure what the protocol is.
Sure.
I have not filed a complaint with the, with the team, the accountability team. But I have an ugly situation that I've been trying to get a meeting with the commissioner, as well as internal affairs and law enforcement. So...
So, I could give you the format. So, right now, we're hearing a bill, a proposed bill to create a police accountability board. And so, this is the committee that is, is forming the bill. And so, if you had any comments on the bill, we'd welcome that. If you had a specific situation, what I would ask is, I'll, I'll have Shannon from the police department give you the contact information for internal affairs or whoever it was that you needed to reach. So, if that's helpful, I can have her meet you in the back and give you whatever contact information it was that you were looking for.
Well, I'd like to meet with you versus...
With me?
The other option that you said.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I would like to speak with you on a one-on-one in private, if, if that's possible.
Sure, yeah, after the hearing, I'm happy to talk to you.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. Next up, Christina Flowers, did you want to speak?
Good afternoon, everyone, counsel, all of you guys. Madam Middleton, when I think about this bill, I really just wanted to come and have a discussion from the NGO organizations, the private sectors that work with the vulnerable population in the city. Having a relationship with officers is very important to me as a homeless advocate, because we find ourselves in situations all the time when officers are there to do one thing, and we are there to do something else. And I know you guys are talking about services and things of implementing and making it a little easier for the officers. Again, this is real important to us, because being on such a committee could allow us to have that relationship, and that's really important, especially in our homeless population that don't always have the best relationship with officers. But it's good that they could have a go-to person or someone as a buffer, such as myself or my other advocates, to be able to work with our homeless individuals. So, whatever part that can be put in there, I would love to be a part of it, because this should be a committee that, again, looks out for those individuals that's on the streets and always engage in offices. And sometimes, officers, you know, may not know the right way to deal with this population. I basically lived with a lot of them for eight months, and it was good to deal with officers to know, once they knew someone was there, that they could talk to when you got a hostile homeless person or behavior problem. You know, it really works on relationships. So, having that relationship with some of the advocates, especially from my advocates, because again, we from that non-government organization, and we need that partnership with the city as well, because these are vulnerable individuals. And sometimes, officers is not always the best to deal with them, and sometimes it is. So, we could go either or, but let's put some things in place that they can have a opportunity to do things. And let's, let's bring the homeless police officers, they used to have the hot team. You remember that, Madam Middleton? The hot team is gone now. And that was a very, very vital, important group on the street to just specifically deal with homeless issues. I mean, I'm one, and I thank God for my partners, but that hot team was a very good thing to put in place, to have someone, when you got a homeless situation or something going on in a shelter, you could be able to send that specific individuals to that. And that probably could make it so much better for the officers to deal with more crucial situations, and then sometimes, just the homeless individuals just acting like they want to act, you know? But we all do sometimes. So, that would be something I would like to be in consideration and even consider for to be on this committee, because relationships is a very important part in all of our agencies, not just the police department. But we gotta have relationships to be able to help our population. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, and thank you for all the work that you do. And just a couple of things on that. Number one, I've asked Chairman Conway, who's the bill sponsor, to speak with you after. We're still working on, you know, how the composition of the board will be. I mean, right now, I think the general draft is that the mayor has all the appointments, and so he can select. But I think we're gonna be divvying up those positions a little bit. And so, that's something that the chairman's willing to speak with you about. I want you to just hear some of your ideas and see what we can do on that. And the second thing, I'll just ask BPD if you can follow up with us. As a side point, I was gonna put it in as a question for budget hearings, but why wait another week or two if you can just send us the information about what happened with the hot team? I know, I saw you emailing.
They was good, Wallace and them, Officer Wallace. I used to think her and Larry was brothers and sisters, but...
Yeah, I used to, because I've seen, I've seen there's like an explorer that has, that has the name, that has hot, the hot team on it.
On the truck. They got a new van and everything.
Exactly. So, if you can just give us the information.
They can be the van if they want to now. I ain't got no problem with that.
Yeah, if you can get, if you can get that information to us, I'll make sure Ms. Flowers gets the information.
Let me give you my card, and anytime, definitely, whatever part we can play. Thank you, guys. Awesome job. Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Middleton.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, so that looks like it concludes the signups. Natasha, did you have something you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note that I, I think inadvertently, some amendments for consideration were missed. I do want to flag just one that we caught, for instance, was that in the law enforcement agencies, the bill has it...
No, the next hearing is during the daytime, but the last hearing was in the evening.
I see, okay, well, let's, keep us all in mind, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? If not, we will be in recess, the next hearing will be on June 8th at 1:00 PM. Thank you so much.